Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our unique meeting of the Webster Center School District Board of Education. Would you please stand and join us in the reciting of our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
All right, examining our agenda, I would recommend that we move Roman numeral four, A, number one, up to Roman numeral two, letter E. And I'm unaware of any other changes, so may we have a motion, please, to accept the agenda with the amendment? Thank you.
Make a motion that we move out of executive session.
We do, we're never in.
We didn't go in?
We never went into it.
I guess we technically didn't.
Nope. There was no reason to go into executive session. All right, may we, all in favor? Opposed? All right, it's, motion stands, and our agenda is set. I see no one in visitor speaking time, so we'll move on to our liaisons. Chris, welcome.
Good evening, board members. The school year has flown by and has now come to a bittersweet end. We, the seniors, are excited to move on to our next adventure, wherever it takes us. But we'll always remember these last four years as being wonderful years that we will soon never forget. The activities for the seniors were kicked off by the senior ball at Casa Larga in Fairport. There, we had a great dinner, a lot of dancing, and made memories that will not leave us anytime soon. The next event is the senior parade on Monday, which we will come here to spry, and then we'll go to the elementary school in which we attended, and just, you know, see some of our former teachers, and have some nostalgic feelings of kindergarten all the way up through eighth grade. Then it will be followed by graduation on June 25th at 2:30 PM at the Gordon Field House at RIT. Another news at Schrader, the Four Spring Concerts were a great way to kind of end the school year, so congratulations to all of our dedicated musicians. They all worked very hard this year. Also, school awards have also been like the highlight of this week. Freshmen's, sophomores, and juniors had theirs earlier in the week, and the seniors are tonight at the auditorium in Schrader. So congratulations to all the students that won awards. They all worked very hard for it. Webster-Schrader is very proud to announce that Dalton Pumputis was selected by WXSI's Top of the Class, where WXSI looks for not necessarily the valid Victorian, but the most well-rounded of the students in the class. As you can probably guess, it is highly selective, so we are incredibly proud of Dalton and his dedication to the school with like the Warrior Crew this year, and also dedication to himself and his future success. With this being the last meeting, I want to thank all of you for the dedication you all have to the students of Webster. Seeing you all here, you know, once a month or every other month, and at various school events, means a lot to the students at Webster, so I want to thank you for always putting the students first, and making these 12 years of my high school, middle school, and elementary school some of the best moments of my life. It's really provided me with a great education and a foundation for the future, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Don't be afraid to come back and visit us.
I won't.
Come to our board meeting any time.
Anytime.
Thank you, thank you.
And I bet you can download it.
Yeah. Hi, Sam.
Hi, Sam.
So, some last-minute changes. Ben was supposed to be here, but he unfortunately does not have a voice, so I don't know how that would've gone if, you know, he's got a short throat, so, you know, we got each other's backs, but the time has finally come. As you know, there are two more days left of school. I'm pumped, I'm ready, ready for summer. So, after the two weeks of regents, the school year will come to an end, and as you know, last weekend was the senior trip. We had a whopping 240 participants, and they had a great time over at Camp Corey. And so, senior graduation, as you know, going to be on June 25th at RIT, and another great thing is that Nicole Hubie won the car from the Henderson Ford, and Hayden Woodworth won the $500, which I think is pretty awesome. So, on Monday, the last day of school, all Thomas seniors will be able to revisit their elementary schools, as you already mentioned, and I am pretty excited to see them, because I remember last year over at middle school, I saw them all come over to there too, and I, there were a lot of emotions going around, so I'm, that's gonna be a bittersweet moment for all of them. And this past Tuesday, Thomas held their annual academic awards ceremony, and this, the ceremony recognizes students who go above and beyond in the classroom. There are also scholarship awards given to juniors for colleges such as Clarkson, RPI, RIT, and the University of Rochester. Also, one student from each grade is given the Assistant Principals Award, where each student is personally chosen by one assistant principal. Finally, one of the biggest honors of the night is the Principals Award. Mr. Ruidor selects one student from each grade and recognizes them for not only being a great student, but also an amazing citizen overall and outstanding person. This year's final sports season has wrapped up, and all Thomas spring sports teams were named New York State Scholar-Athlete Teams. Boys and girls track and field won their leagues this season. Congratulations to all track and field athletes on such a great season. This past Monday, Thomas held its annual athletics award night, where Thomas athletes were recognized for their hard work and dedication on and off the field during this crazy season. Awards included highest in-season GPA on the team, and the Titan Award for Most Outstanding Individual on the team. There were 18 individuals who received the Triple Crown this year, being recognized for being on three varsity sports in their senior year. That's a lot to balance, I would imagine. Finally, there were 32 recipients of the WABO Scholar-Athlete Award, given to athletes with a cumulative GPA 90 or above and participating in at least two varsity sports. This is the highest number of recipients, and Thomas is very proud of all the winners. And for those of you who are not aware, when we liaisons are writing these reports, we always have to stop down to Mr. Morrison, the Thomas Athletic Director, to hear about athletics. And every visit with him starts with a smile and a great report with all that's been going on. He's very passionate about what he does, and he would always tell a joke, and he's just been great. And he always loved talking to us, both Ben and I, but it's very sad to see Mr. Morrison having to retire. But for me, as Mr. LaMonica being the new athletic director, I kind of get to go back to my past, because he was actually my principal back in elementary school, so I'm kind of excited about that too, though I will miss Mr. Morrison. So, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Anne.
Well, thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you very much.
Have a great summer, you guys.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When the board considers the characteristics of a person that they will be approving for a leadership role, particularly a school principal, we like to take a look at some attributes. The board desires a person who is shaping the vision of academic success for all students, who is creating a healthy, safe, inviting climate, who is cultivating leadership in others, who is managing people, data, and processes, and most importantly, works relentlessly to improve achievement by focusing on the quality of instruction. We believe our next guest possesses these attributes. Karen, would you like to present our new Clem North Principal?
Thanks, Mike. So Laura, if you don't mind coming up. So, to our Board of Education, tonight we are honored, Mr. Swinson, Mr. Neenan, and Mr. Freeman, and Mrs. Cahoon, and I are honored to recommend the appointment of Mrs. Laura Ballou as the new Clem North Principal, who takes over for Mr. LaMonica. As Sam Stacey had mentioned, he's moving to a new position within our district. And Laura was clearly the top candidate to come out of our nearly two-and-a-half-month, almost three-month process, and the process, our interview process is about, is four, four different steps. There's a screening interview, then a building interview, then back up the district office for a district-level committee, and then finally, we do a site visit. And Laura, in each one of those four steps, Laura was always the number-one candidate coming out, and unanimous, the unanimous number-one candidate coming out of each of those steps. So Laura's been with the district as Assistant Principal at Clem North for nearly eight or nine years. We haven't really decided which number that is, and she's very excited to stay within her home family at Clem North, and I know how lucky we are to keep you within Webster. So Laura, would you like to say a couple words to the board?
Thank you so much, Karen, and thank you, board, for having me tonight. I'm very excited to continue my time at Clem North as the new principal. I have been working in education my whole career, since graduating from college. It's always been my passion to work with students, and I'm just overjoyed, I don't know how much you want me to say, I'm overjoyed to continue at Clem North, working with the students, staff, and families. We have a lot of exciting things going on in Webster, and definitely a lot of exciting things going on in Clem North that we'll just continue to improve and grow together, so it's excellent, thank you.
So before the board, before you take action on this, the main theme that came out of each one of the four rounds of interviews was Laura's ability to connect with kids and adults, and her unwavering commitment to doing what is in the child's best interest, and also her sense of humor.
Yeah.
So many people mentioned Laura's ability to de-escalate some tense situations with a well-played joke or a witty remark, so, and that is one of my number-one charac, one of my number-one traits I look for in a team member, so, so thank you for that, Laura, and the sense of humor is well-needed when you're a principal.
Yeah.
So it's good, keep that up. So, Mike, I think at this point, well, I would officially recommend that the board act on the appointment of Mrs. Ballou.
All right. May we have a motion, please, to appoint Laura as the principal at Clem North?
So.
All right, and second by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you.
You're gonna do your report?
That was my report.
Okay. You're gonna, all right.
Man, I have to go.
Well, being a school board member can be a challenging and exciting experience, and it presents many opportunities to contribute and improve our school community. We are saying goodbye to one of our members tonight, who definitely contributed and improved our school community. We want to thank Ann for her service and dedication. Ann provided the board with her unique talents, all the while collaborating as a team with other board members, as we move to accomplish the board goals of working towards the greater good of student learning and student growth. We acknowledge her efforts to make our school community stronger, so thank you, Ann, for your years of service to our district, and more importantly, to our students. I believe, Sue, you have something?
Yes, I do. So, Ann, you have been in the district in many different capacities, as a parent, as a PTSA member and chair of probably individual schools and central. You've been a communications director and a board member, so you've been serving the Webster community and the Webster students for a long, long time, and we really appreciate that, and thank you for that. There's three things that I think of when I think of Ann, and it's always a pleasure to work with somebody who has these, who does these things. She's very selfless. Everything she does is about someone else and is about the organization. Nothing is ever about Ann, and that's always very ple, very pleasing. She, she also holds herself accountable, just as much as she holds everyone else accountable, and that's always really nice, too. You don't want somebody there who's, you know, holds everyone to a standard and then doesn't deliver themselves, and Ann is always, I think, actually, in some ways, she was harder on herself than she was on other people. And lastly, this one is, Ann is always challenging us to do better. No matter what it is, it's always, you know, we can do better, we can do better, and it's just, you know, it's for our kids, and that's the right, that's the right attitude to have, so, thank you very much for your service, Ann. Ann, on behalf of the board, we have a small token of our appreciation from our favorite store.
Ah.
Oh, yes, my favorite quote, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has, by Margaret Mead. And this is something that, in fact, I was sorry that Tammy wasn't here, because she and I have talked about this over the years, and it is something that I do believe. You know, public education is just so incredibly important. Mike, who is going to be the president of Monroe County School Boards, remarked at the annual meeting recently of the importance and the distinction of public education and any other educational entity. Not only are we required to take everyone who wants to come through our doors, but we embrace it. We're happy to do it. We feel honored. We recognize that a good education is critical for everyone, regardless of their circumstances, and that, and that's, it seems so overwhelming, and sometimes impossible to achieve, but I believe that it is this small group, or another small group, but it's always a small group, somebody that makes that difference, and that inspires us to do that. So, it really has been a pleasure to be part of an educational community, and it's been about 38 years, and I think about all the levels that I have served, and nothing has honestly meant more to me than being a mother and a grandmother than this. And I know that the board's in great hands. I see another soon-to-be board member in the audience, and I know what he will bring is the same high standard and the same challenge that, you know, it's important to look beyond our narrow window, so, but it's been a pleasure to work with all of you, so thank you so much.
Be here, unfortunately, but she did send some wishes, and I would like to read them if I'm married.
And I'm sorry, I probably should've waited. I'm also impatient, did you hear that?
No, you're not. Her words were, "Ann, I have been more, I have been more inspired by you than any other person involved in public education. Your unwavering commitment and depth of knowledge has served countless members in our community. Your belief in the power of advocacy for our community's children's education has been an inspiration to me in the many years we've known each other. Yours is a voice of empowerment, reason, and inclusion, and I hope we continue to hear your voice in our community with gratitude, Tammy."
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you all. It's gonna seem strange.
There's more things coming, yeah. We'll move on to our board business. The State Environmental Quality Review Act requires that the Board of Education certify that our capital outlay project at Clem South have no significant environmental impact. Since it's mostly maintenance work, we can certify that it is a Type II project. Brian, would you like to add anything to that?
Sure. This is for the project that was recently approved with the budget vote as part of our ongoing $100,000 that are part of that process. This one's moving a little quicker, because it's identical to the one that you just recently saw the bids accepted for two weeks ago. Same exact work is gonna be happening at Clem South that is going on at Plank South right now, so it's a very easy, more streamlined process for facilities planning, so we're able to get out ahead of that one a lot quicker than the last one. So, that's, that's all I got on that.
Any questions from the board? Then may we have a motion, please, to approve the resolution for the CQAR? Thank you, a second. Thank you, Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, this past May, voters approved the purchase and finance of new school buses, so now the board needs to consider a resolution authorizing the issuing and sale of bonds for the purchase of these buses. And the bond will not exceed $1,666,000. This does require a two-thirds majority vote, as well as a roll call vote. So, our, Brian, do you want to add anything to that?
No, this is just to help us get the process started. It takes a couple months to get the financing in order, to get the buses here in time for school to start.
All right, may we have a motion, then, to approve this resolution?
So.
Thank you, a second. Thank you. Want to do the roll call?
Sure. Ann?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we move on to, at the end of the fiscal school year, we take a look at our unappropriated funds, and we determine if it's feasible to transfer any funds to our reserve funds. Now, having adequately funded reserves are vital to the long-term health and stability of our school district. We do have reserves that Brian is recommending that we transfer into, so, Brian, would you like to make any comments about those?
Sure. I just want to comment that these are estimated transfers at this time. We close our books June 30th, so we don't exactly know what may happen. Several years have gone by where, you know, you're estimating, and then in June, perhaps a tuition bill from another district you weren't expecting sneaks into the final planning, so it could throw it off a little bit. But these estimated reserves, transfers that I've outlined, really focus on the four areas where I feel like the district is most concerned. Additions to the Capital Reserve Fund to help with future projects, the Tax Certuary Reserve, additional monies there to help offset what our current liabilities are in those areas, workers' compensation to help us down the road with costs associated there, and then the Retirement Contribution Reserve as well, was recently depleted by over $2 million, so tried to add a little bit more into that coming up this fiscal year.
Board, before we act on the reserve transfers, would you like to hear the reserve report, or, okay, you want to move into that?
Sure, we can move right into the reserve report. So, this is in conjunction, what I thought would be a best practice going forward at the end of every single year, and what I did was take every possible reserve that is available to us, to the district, and I've done a couple different things. What I kind of outlaid for the board, a little bit of the background, showed what S&amp;P has said about our credit rating, and some of the comptrollers' comments on reserves, and why they're needed and where they are. And so, just for the kind of ease of where we're at, I've really broken it down into a couple different sections. You'll see what's the authority for the reserve, so where does it come from, where's it developed, kind of how that all springs from. Then I give you a two-year balance. You see, in the beginning of the report, I have done six years' worth of balances in all the reserves for the Board of Education, but as nested into each explanation, I just did a two-year comparison to see where we're at. A targeted balance section, and that's where I've, in conjunction with our auditors, and looking at, all right, what should be a target for this reserve for Webster? Because every district is different, what their targeted balance is. For instance, our tax certuary target would be significantly different than a district that doesn't have a single case against it. They might not need one, where we need one that's significantly higher. You know, that's a specific district thing, so I try to adjust the targeted balance for each one of the reserves based on what our needs are. And you'll notice some of the reserves have zero. Over the years, they've become obsolete, or we've done something different. We've bought additional insurance coverage through NYSER, which means we don't need money in an insurance reserve, so you've seen those differences throughout the year. Doesn't necessarily mean as times change, we might not go back and look at, at that reserve if something happens. But right now, you see several of the reserves that are possible for the district have no balances in there. And then just some discussion points with each one of why we developed that, where we're at, and moving forward of where we would like to go for each, each reserve that you see before you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
I really appreciate it, having that.
This is really good, but I have to ask, what gives with the repair reserve? That balance has been the same, I think, for 20 years.
You're probably right, because normally, a repair reserve would be used for something that's an absolute emergency. They're quite popular in smaller districts, where their facilities budget is much smaller, so they would tap that reserve to use for things where we have more of a robust facilities program, and that, that's just, if something breaks, we have the ability to adjust to it. So that's one that hasn't changed very much, because it's used for non-adeable things, and we always try to do our capital projects around adable things from the state, so it's not exactly the best use of our money, so it's just been kind of hanging out there for a while.
Could we move it to the Capital Reserve?
That one's got, that, yeah, that one's, would have to do a public hearing about moving it, and so that's one, it's, it's small enough to just kind of sit there and, you know, not do much with.
And you could use it if you made a decision.
We could, you know, yeah.
I assume also, we have a large enough staff, we have the appropriate expertise. We rarely have to go out of district for repairs, so.
Yeah, unless somebody, you know, we're tied up, like, a couple times, we had to outsource some plumbing, because our internal group was tied up with a lot of the lead testing, so we had two guys around the clock on that, so that, that taxed us from a personnel standpoint, so we did kind of outsource some things where it made sense, but for the most part, yeah, we're, we do everything in-house.
And I see we had a big increase in the property loss reserve, like $40, $60.
Making a lot of interest in there, but.
Mike?
I noticed on the Capital Reserve that that's gone down over the last six years. I see the number at 2010 and 11. Where do we want to be, or what's the healthy part of that, where do you want to be as far as that reserve?
So, that, that fluctuates. So, previously, the max the Capital Reserve could go to was $10 million. Last year, voters authorized us that we could do $15 million, but 3.2 was left over from the old reserve, so that automatically comes in, so now, all we could really put into the new reserve is 11.8.
Okay.
So, that's the most, we can fund it over the next 10 years. Ideally, we'd like to build it up enough, so the next project, it would take care of any local share, or items, we know that, you know, we need to get that done, the state won't aid it, let's use the reserve to offset that cost.
Okay, so we don't want that to go down until we need to use it for a bigger project?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
In the long term, having a good capital project reserve is like keeping the tax rate down.
Yes, yeah, because you mitigate anything the state won't do. The recent roof project, when that largest decrease you saw in the history, is because we pulled a little over $3, $3.3 million out of that Capital Reserve to bring down the cost of the project, so it was basically neutral.
I don't, I don't think you're really bringing it down, I, because you were taxing it to begin with, so it's taxed over time, it's extra money that's left over, so you're really.
But if you didn't have it, that rate would be much higher.
Yeah, we don't, we're not planning for it.
But you wouldn't be taxing as much each year, either.
Right, and that's, that's one difference between us, in some districts actually put a line item in their budget.
Right.
That says, "Transfer to Capital Reserve," or "Transfer to this," that plan for it, so every year, they could say, "We're gonna take $50,000 and put it into that reserve," and make it part of their budget.
Right.
We do not plan for it that way. If, you know, we have a better year and have some funds available, then we'll allocate it to there, but it's not planned like some other districts do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Jan?
I just wanted to ask about, I know we've been using money from the reserves for multiple years to stay under the tax cap, so is this helping us come back up, is this going to increase?
The end of '15, '16 was the first year in about six years that we didn't run a deficit, and by that mean that we were structurally had more revenues than expenditures, so we were able to stop the reduction and actually add a small amount to our fund balance last year.
And our goal is to get back to the highest credit rating?
Our, the short-term, the, yes.
That's my goal.
The, the short-term goal in the next two to three years, the short-term goal in the next two to three years, is to remove the negative outlook on our bond rating, because that is the one that costs us the most in dollars every time we go to borrow. The long-term three-to-five outlook would be to try to, try to, in essence, plan for the next economic downturn, so when do we have to really ramp up spending them again because the, you know, the economy turns, or the state changes, or something? That's, that's the cycle long, that I look at.
Other questions? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the estimated reserve transfer amounts?
So.
Thank you, seconded by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Frank, board, we're also looking at a five-year lease agreement with BOSI's to lease two classroom spaces for special education purposes at Schrader High School.
Correct. It's a little bit different lease than you may remember from the past. Committee work had been done, that our, Shelley Cahoon actually was our representative with BOSI's to draw up new rental and lease agreements for all the component districts with Monroe One, really bring them up to date as far as technology needs in the classroom, and what would be supported. So what you see is for the two classrooms located at Webster-Schrader High School for next year.
Questions from the board? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the rental-lease agreement? In a second? Thank you, Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're also considering a resolution to offer a 457B retirement plan. Now, this provides eligible employees with a voluntary and convenient method of saving on a regular and long-term basis. Brian, is this taking the place of a 403?
It is not, it's in, in addition to. Really, just in the last 10 years, school districts are now able to participate in the New York State Deferred Workers' Compensation Program, and that's what the 457 plan is. we had the 403B system. But now, with changes, school districts are starting to pick up on this, and this is something I saw at a conference last year, so I've investigated a little bit more. And it's really, we're going to dip our toes into the plan, gauge interest with a small group, and see how it goes. So it gives just more choice. It's not an obtrusive administrative headache for the district, but it just opens up the choice for people as they plan for retirement, another type of vehicle to put away funds.
So you're kind of doing a pilot with a small group of people, and then if it goes well, you'll expand the...
We would look to possibly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, to more.
Yeah, just, yep.
Great, thank you.
That would be a personal choice. You know, people would always have the option, I'm not going to use this, because I prefer something over here, or you could do it both simultaneously. From the districts that have participated in it, it's more of in addition to, rather than a replace.
There's a limit on what you can put into a 403?
The exact same limit as in the 457.
So can you double up?
You can.
Really? But the district doesn't contribute?
The district cannot contribute, no, to this. It's only employee can contribute, but the employee themselves can then maximize a 403B, simultaneously maximizing a 457.
So this is deferred compensation, deferred compensation, Brian?
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, that's really nice.
Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the deferred compensation 457 package?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, Brian, you want to give us our revenue and budget status report?
Sure, I could wrap that up with the transfers report, too. Really, it's the third quarter of the '16-'17 year, but you actually just got reports on me guessing how the entire year will go with the estimated reserve transfer reports. So the third quarter report seems a little outdated right now.
Yes.
But yes, I think we're projecting well for the remainder of the year as far as revenue and expenditures. See, on the revenue side, a little bit more in sales tax overall than we had expected, based on the historical trend data there. We did fairly well, and more with BOSI's aid than we had expected to, with expenditures that helped on the revenue side when those state runs came through. And then on the expenditure side, we did not have an anticipated huge jump in our Medicare costs for the second half of this year, like we had one year previous where the plans went up 63 percent. So we did a little bit better there, too, which combined to help overall our numbers. So you'll see that trend through the third quarter, and when we do the report in July, that closes out the year for the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. And then with that, the transfer reports, so we've started that, this is now the second time, I believe, we've done this for the board, because it came out of our audit last year as a best practice, that any transfers, budgetary transfers that I approve from one budget code to another, or any revenue transfers from one to another, get approved by the Board of Education as well. So I think we started that for the first time in January, so this is the second time you're seeing that.
And that's really just using one code for another?
Correct, it'd be like, you know, an expenditure came through, and I wasn't thinking it was, should belong there, it goes someplace else, we do a budget transfer to cover that.
Questions from the board? Right, may we have a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, we're also looking at a BOSI's transportation contract, which will provide services for some of our special education students who need the related service. Anything important to note in this contract?
No, we do this contract every single year between ourselves and BOSI's. We outsource generally anywhere from 35 to 45 students a year get transported through BOSI's. For students with disabilities that have some unique needs, BOSI's will do that for us. This is the contract that we sign off on, approve, BOSI's also does that, and then we file it with the state, so we get the appropriate transportation aid with the contract.
Any questions from the board? Motion, please, to accept the contract. Thank you. Thank you, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, speaking of contracts, we're looking at two proposed collective bargaining agreements, one with the Webster Food Service Association, a second with the Webster Education Leadership Association. It's looking for our approval. Brian, any details on those?
You have the overview of both contracts right in front of you, just the snippets. We have both groups transitioning to the Simply Blue High Deductible Plan that RASH offers as the base plan, moving forward over the next couple of years here. And, you know, that's the big takeaway from those contracts.
Questions from the board? Okay.
On the perfect attendance, how's that figured out? At the end of the year, as far as a...
Correct.
Like a refund check, or a check saying, hey, here's a good, perfect attendance?
So if they've hit all the benchmarks of that?
Yeah.
Then at the end of the year, we run the report that they had it, and then it carries...
Much extra for each hour they work?
For next year.
For the following year?
For the following year. So it's one year of perfect attendance, so say '16-'17, you have perfect attendance, you would see that in '17-'18.
As far as a raise?
Correct.
Is that a raise just for the following year, or is that...
Just for the following year.
Got you.
If you keep perfect attendance again for '17-'18, you keep the raise for '18-'19.
Other questions? Do you want to do these together, or you want to separate? Board, what's your preference?
What are we doing, together?
Do both contracts together? You okay with that?
I think they should be separate.
Alright, then let's take the food service first. May we have a motion, please, to accept the collective bargaining agreement with the Webster Food Service Association?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May we have a motion, please, to accept the collective bargaining agreement with Wila?
So moved.
In a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we're moving on to more board business. We have the PTSA at Schlegel Road Elementary has raised money for a shaded structure for their playground, and they are gifting the district $7,800 for this purpose. Brian, anything to add to that?
Sure, what we're doing is holding the money for the Schlegel Road PTSA. Because we are one year out from improving the playgrounds as part of the capital project, they are going to piggyback off of that. It would be to their benefit to wait, rather than to purchase something right now, to wait and purchase it when we are purchasing over a million dollars' worth of playground equipment. It would be to their benefit. So we are holding that for them as part of their process until that time.
Questions at all? Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the grant from the Schlegel Road PTSA?
So moved.
Thank you, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll move into some old business. We have a number of policies that we've taken a look at. Sue, you want to highlight any of them?
This is the second reading of all the policies, so, you know, we've had a chance to look at them once. Several of them just have minor changes, those are the ones that have red marks on them. There's one policy, well, I guess you would say two, the 4010 and the 4015, which used to be one policy, now we're splitting it out and making it into two. Brian really wanted to articulate the difference there, and put a little bit more verbiage, and just make it more, just more understandable to the public and to the board. And then there was one that we were combining, so we separated two, and then we combined the insurance, let's see, the 4090, let me just get there. 40, okay, the 5160 and 4090, so the accidents and the insurance have been put in together. So those are really the notable changes. The ones that we've made changes in the red, you know, they're pretty, well, one of them looks huge, because that was one of the ones that we were combining. But, for instance, the Title I, the transportation policies, they're just very minor changes in making sure that we have the right title of the person in the policy. So do you have any questions?
Alright, can we take them all together?
I think so, since this is the second reading and there aren't any questions, I think we can do that.
Alright, may we have a motion, please, to accept the second reading of the policies stated in our notes from A through letter I?
I'll let somebody else make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mike, and seconded by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright.
So, yes, just, you know, next year, one of our policy people is leaving, you know, you might need to get into line if you want to be in the policy committee, so be thinking about it, and...
We'd have a blast.
Likes on it, yeah. It's a good committee.
Oh, it's lively.
Alright, moving on.
Just be thinking about it. And make sure you get first.
It's like, what you think, I mean?
Sue just most of the board, she and the district staff.
I gotta tell you, now I'm thinking right now for what you do.
Yes, absolutely.
Because you do awesome.
Dave and Brian do it. Dave and Brian do it.
They get paid to do it, though.
That is true.
Big time.
Alright, so let's take a look at our board calendar. July 11th is the big one. That's our, when we set our goals.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, it's from 12:30 until 7 o'clock. Bill, please mark that down on your...
Please, I have it.
Also, Bill, we need to have a orientation with you, so after the meeting, if you could kind of give us some dates, that would work, or we can give you an orientation to that.
Can I see the operations manual?
One thing I want to point out is the NISBA Conference, October 12th through 14th. It looks like we will, the easiest way, obviously, is to drive there. And the official schedule starts at 4 o'clock on that Thursday, October 12th. There are some educational sessions and pre-convention workshops before that. I'm thinking that if we were to drive down, and we leave around 8 o'clock in the morning, we're probably there hopefully around noonish, which would give us enough time to go to some of the education sessions, and the education expo opens at 3 o'clock, with the reception starting at 4. You think it's going to take us longer? You think it'll take us longer than...
It may take a little bit longer to get there.
Well, there are a number of, this is something we got to figure out. There are a number of board members going, plus we have a number of members from our district who are presenting. We're presenting at 1 o'clock on Thursday. Ooh! So that puts a...
Are you going Wednesday?
We hadn't decided yet.
That's why I'm a boss.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you can...
Well, we would like to, I would like to be, I would like to be part, at least see what you guys are doing.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you're going up Wednesday, then that's going to affect when we go up. So you're going up Wednesday, right?
Right. And we, it's possible, because...
We can go up early.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, Cindy has to make arrangements for us, like, in the next week.
Wednesday, or the 15th?
Right.
Okay, the 15th.
Would the, would the board be willing to go up on a Wednesday night?
And return on Saturday?
Return on Saturday?
So why not be working Thursday?
The question is how early you have to leave.
If you want to be there for 1 o'clock, you're going to be checking in at your hotel, and, I mean, we're leaving at 6 o'clock in the morning.
You're in 6, that's right.
Brian, well, 6 o'clock's not bad, as long as it's not 4 o'clock. Brian, can you Google it real quick, see how long it takes to get there? Webster to...
I think it's five, five hours.
Five hours?
Four.
Or, depends on who's driving.
The Traverse.
Four, right.
Pass on the right.
Pass on the right.
We have a Traverse in a Jeep.
Four hours, 42 minutes.
So say five hours.
Five hours to be, I mean, they need to get there, and they want to decompress for a minute.
So they're going up Wednesday, they're going up Wednesday night. So the decision will have to be, which board members want to go up Wednesday night, and which board members want to drive on Thursday?
So...
But Cindy needs to know for a hotel room on Wednesday night. I'll go up Wednesday night. I don't know if any other board member, Jan will?
Who else wants to go Wednesday? Jan?
Bill, are you able to go to that conference? Have you thought about it at all? Okay. Think about it fast. Not tonight, but like within the next couple days.
Yeah, if you could let me know by the 14th.
Well, I'll let you know tomorrow. I just took that. I had a...
No problem.
I know. Kiss. A home run.
September?
Yeah. It's September.
Alright, so we're all set? We'll let Cindy know if you're going to go up Wednesday. And I'm making the assumption that you guys are taking the district car, or...
We have, I mean, we have room for seven in the district Traverse. We have a Jeep that I can't promise would make it to Lake Placid.
Alright, so that means like, one of us, one of the board members are probably driving off.
Am I going up, Cindy?
Are you going up Wednesday night, though?
I got to figure it out right now.
I don't know if I want to drive with you, though.
Chances are, the four of us would be together. Actually, Zimmer's got to drive separate, because he's coming back. So, yeah, we...
What's the, what's that over, the...
Yes.
This year.
You clearly agree.
I have to know.
Alright, while you're figuring that out, I also want to point out that in August, we're moving a Thursday meeting to a Tuesday, which would be August 15th, for a tax rate. Everybody okay with them moving them Thursday to a Tuesday?
Yes, needs to be.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, so with that being said, may we have a motion, please, to accept the second reading of our Board of Education calendar?
So moved.
Second, please, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here we go. We just have to make sure we tell Cindy, and we'll figure out transportation, because you can't fly there.
No.
Does the law give you that?
The July date is the 11th.
Day?
That's for our Board of Education goal setting.
Correct.
Okay? Alright.
Is there anything on this calendar that's not the classic time of 6:30? Because the times aren't listed.
They're all 6:30. Assume 6:30.
Assumes, okay.
And then if we need an executive session, then it would be early.
I know that BOSI's one is 8 a.m.
Yeah, that BOSI's is 8.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
In February, but otherwise, you can just assume that it's 6:30?
Correct.
Okay.
That is...
Thanks.
Alright. Alright, let's move on to school A's, on, we know there's going to be flag days, and field days, and moving up days, and award ceremonies, so I'm sure everybody's got that ceremonies, so I'm sure everybody's got that going. So, Jan, do you have anything to report?
I went to Clums Norris PTSA last night, and it was a fairly large crowd. It was very exciting because they were welcoming Laura, and they were also expressing their thanks to Steve. And a lot of good things happened. Someone volunteered to be the chair, so that was taken care of. And they have a lot of events, as everyone does, coming up, but one of, I thought that was particularly interesting this weekend, is Friday, June 10, or is that Saturday? There's a mother-son event at Lollipop Farm in which they are planting flowers and doing some good things out at Lollipop Farm, and then after it's through, they're going to visit the animals. I thought that was a very nice event. And then they have sold a lot of Red Wings tickets for Saturday night's game. They are going, and they are going to be the group that brings the flag out on the field, so that's very exciting for them, too. So they had dates for kindergarten play dates in August, and they're well organized, I guess I'd say. And they are moving the PTSA meetings next year to a Monday night, the first one being September 18, because they've always been Wednesday, but we're moving to Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Linda, anything?
There hasn't been a meeting since May, but I do know that they have a new leadership team taking over in September, and so that's exciting, and just the usual moving up, Flag Day, there's field days tomorrow, lots of field trips and assemblies.
Thank you. Mike, anything?
Who took my meeting?
I did.
Okay, anything going on?
We reported on it last time, didn't we?
Didn't I? Yeah, I reported on it last time.
Okay. So there's nothing new since then?
Right.
I think tomorrow is their fifth grade...
Moving up.
Moving up day, and I think the 14th, I think, is their Flag Day.
Yep. I think all the schools are on the 14th, yep.
Yep.
Ann?
Yes, State Road does have one more meeting, and just, they've had a great year, and Stacy Peters and her co-chair Allison, and I apologize, but her last name escapes me, are moving into the Central PTSA roles as leaders. They will bring a great energy and history. And I just wanted to take a minute and thank the central leadership. They have had a remarkable year. Not only have they accomplished the normal organizational things that Central PTSA is responsible for, but they increased the overall membership of PTSA by a few hundred. They conducted a survey that was sent to both staff, PTSA members, and parents. They had over 800 responses, which I thought was remarkable. And the survey results helped determine the programs that they held that were really excellent and extremely well-attended. They also did a lot of work, and Sue, you'll appreciate this on policies, because, you know, without them, as mundane as that sounds, without a policy and specific guidelines, it's easy to stray. And they really wanted to align their work, not just at the central level, but at the building levels, with the mission and goals of both national and state PTA. And I just wanted to thank Dorothy Petrie and Jen DeGrace, because they really did take over a difficult set of circumstances two years ago, and most of the offices are filled, and they have just, they just did a remarkable job. And I know, Mike, you've been at the meetings, Linda, and I think you'll agree with me that they brought a lot of structure, and they really should be congratulated for the efforts that they did. And I want to thank Allison and Stacy for taking over now. I think there will be another 18 there.
Great.
Thank you. Sue?
Yes, at Schlegel, many events coming up, Flag Day, Whiskers Fun Day, Fifth Grade Moving Up Day. And they're having a drive that benefits Lollipop Farm and other animal rescue groups, so if you have any extra gently-used towels or blankets, there's a bin in the foyer at Schlegel Road that you can drop them off at for needy animals, and that's through June 15. And the last day of elementary school is Wednesday, June 21st. It's a half-day, yes.
At Clem South, their award assembly and moving up day is Tuesday, June 20. And earlier this week, the Division One and Division Two sports signings from both high schools was held. We had 28 athletes, that's the most I can remember. And more important than the fact that we had 28 athletes, the combined scholastic average for those 28 people was 94. So we really do have a scholastic student athletic program there. Well, we'll move on to Monroe County. The School Board Recognition Program acknowledges the extensive time and effort required of school board members who continually strive to expand their knowledge and skills for better board governance. Now, NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association members, they earn credits for participating in various training opportunities, including our annual convention and regional workshops and custom improvement programs. And there's four levels of recognition. The first is a board achievement, then there's the board excellence, the third is the board mastery level, and finally, the lifetime achievement. Now, tonight, we're honoring two board members. The first is Tammy. She's earned 75 training points or the Board Achievement Award, and we'll give that award to her when she's here. And the second is Ann Carmody, who's earned 250 training points or a Board Mastery Award. And she receives...
Another plaque.
Yep, another plaque.
My other student...
It says, "Ann Carmody, in grateful appreciation for your service as a Board of Education member from the Monroe County School Boards Association." You also receive a certificate. Now, this you'll use, this is, I think you'll use this, a nice little portfolio.
Very nice, yes.
And I don't know how you're going to use this one, but this is for free in-person training with NISBA.
Bill? It's my gift to you. Never say.
Getting the 250 training points, Ann, is really an accomplishment. That's a...
I told you it's going to be hard.
What are you going to do with all your free time?
I've got it planned.
All right. We'll move on to our standing committees. The Audit Committee met earlier this week and reviewed three different reports. The first was our Claims Audit Update. Now, here, roughly 4,000 checks from the General Fund, the School Lunch Fund, the Trusted Agency Fund, the Capital and Special Aid Fund, were reviewed by our Claims Auditor, and only eight checks were determined to be incorrect. And this was because some of the checks were written in the incorrect payee, or the wrong, you know, the wrong date, or something of that nature, or the reimbursement request was incorrect. But she also said that all issues were resolved, so that's just amazing, that you'd only have eight out of 4,000. We then heard from Ray Wager, and he discussed our preliminary audit, and everything there went fairly well. And finally, we had our internal audit report, which reviewed our procedures and related controls over processing receipts at the Aquatic Center. Now, you have to remember, our Aquatic Center not only does the pool operations, but also does our community education program. And we received a few recommendations, which we will be most likely putting to place shortly if we had not already. Did I cover that fairly well?
Yeah, you see, at the next board meeting, you'll have the report and my overview of what we're going to do to improve everything.
Okay. You did policy already, Sue, so did, nothing else to report there?
Nothing for policy, you know, we'll be meeting in the fall. And for strategic planning, I expect that we'll be getting together in the summer.
And, Ann, you were on strategic planning, weren't you?
Yeah. I might actually stay on that as a community member, because I could, couldn't I?
All right.
I would keep the pressure on.
You could also do budget advisory.
I could, but, you know, I actually was part of the training of that, so...
Oh, so, okay.
I don't think Brian needs any help.
All right, let's move into our consent agenda. Board members, you had a chance to take a look at it. It consists of our superintendent recommendations of the minutes, the personnel actions, the recommendations on the committee on special education, the recommendations on the committee on preschool education, an inter-municipal agreement. Now, we probably, I know it's in our consent agenda, but Brian, do you want to comment on that at all? That's our...